Good evening. We'll make this our 30-second warning and invite everyone here to find a comfy seat. Good evening. We'd like to officially call this meeting to order tonight. Thank you all for being here. We're thrilled to have so many in attendance, especially so many youth, for this historic night in Gilbert, and we're grateful for you and for your efforts to be here. I would like to notice several elected officials that aren't part of our council but are certainly part of our regional team, and ask them to stand so we can recognize them. We have Chandler Mayor-elect for like, what, three more days, Kevin? Two more days? Kevin Hartke. Queen Creek Councilmember Robin Benning is here. Robin? We're blessed with two county supervisors that represent different portions of Gilbert. They're both here tonight: Supervisor Barney and Supervisor Shukri. And I also think we saw Queen Creek Vice Mayor Emelina Turley here as well, so thank you. Jack Sellers from our State Transportation Board is here. Jack, thank you. Hardest-working man in the valley, that's for sure, so great job. Tom Belshi from the League Executive Team. Thank you, Tom. And Kathy Tilke from our Gilbert Chamber. I know there's lots of Chamber representatives as well. Thank you. At this time, we will have the Gilbert Fire and Police Color Guards post our colors, and we'll proceed from there. Thank you. We'd like to invite Kathryn Cook, Dominic Cook, Ashley Ray, Clara Ray, Dallin Ray, Lexi Ray, and Thomas Ray to the front for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just for all.
We'd like to introduce Officer Steve Jellin from the Gilbert Police Department. He will sing our National Anthem.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Ready, face, forward march.
Let's have a big round of applause for Officer Jellin and all those who assisted us. You may be seated. Father Pavel will bless us with an invocation this evening. Father?
I admire the fact that you want to serve others, make others happy with your service, your sacrifices, so I would like to pray for you and invite you to join me in your hearts. We pray for those here in service, for their families, who also sacrifice the time and commitment. This is the prayer of St. Francis, a man who promoted God as friend of the poor, unity among everybody, and unity with nature. Lord, make us an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me sow love; where there is injury, forgiveness; where there is doubt, faith; where there is despair, hope; where there is darkness, light; where there is sadness, joy. Lord, grant that we may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, not so much to be loved as to love; for in giving it is in giving that we receive, in forgiving that we are forgiven, and in dying that we are born again to eternal life. Amen.
Thank you, Father Pavel from St. Luke's Catholic Church. Thank you for being here this evening. At this time, it's my privilege to recognize Bridget Peterson as our Vice Mayor. Bridget, would you please come forward? Bridget has been an incredible mentor and friend to me, and I'm really grateful for her efforts as our Vice Mayor over the last year. Literally, at the last minute on several occasions, Bridget filled in for me when I was unable to participate in something that was important to the community and has always been a champion for Gilbert. I'm extremely grateful for her dedication as a council member, but really tremendously grateful for her friendship as our Vice Mayor and for all of the work that she does to better Gilbert every day. So it's the certificate of appreciation. As Mayor of the Town of Gilbert, it's my distinct pleasure to express sincere appreciation to Bridget Peterson for serving as Vice Mayor for the town in 2018. Vice Mayor Bridget Peterson carried out the duties of the Office of Vice Mayor, honoring the public trust and representing the citizens of Gilbert with integrity and leadership. Bridget, thank you so much. We have a gift for you as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
We also have a very special recognition that I am pleased to bring to your attention. We will actually approve the resolution and vote on that at the end of this portion of our meeting, but Councilmember Victor Peterson, would you come forward? Yeah, bring him with you. And actually, would all of your family please stand as well? Family for Victor. I see you there. You guys have been remarkable support. Thank you. Thanks, you guys. You've gotten taller since the last time I saw you all, so that's impressive. They're taller than you. I'm pleased to read this resolution, and we have some gifts for Councilmember Peterson as well. He has served valiantly in the Town of Gilbert, committed two terms of his life to this community, spends more time with packets and meeting notes and preparing for the council than anyone I've ever seen in my tenures on council. I'm grateful for his contributions on many levels. I'm very grateful for the sacrifices his family has made as he's served, because I know he puts his whole heart into that, and I'm very grateful. So let me read this for you. "Victor Peterson has served as a council member since June 14, 2011, including serving as Vice Mayor during his tenure. And whereas Victor Peterson has served with honor and distinction throughout his tenure, and whereas his influence has always been exercised with utmost concern that the cares and concerns of stakeholders were carefully considered before a decision was reached. And whereas Victor Peterson served as council liaison to numerous boards and commissions, providing a crucial link between citizen advisory boards and the council. And whereas he has been a polite and passionate advocate," emphasis on passionate, "for sustainable government. And whereas Victor Peterson has improved the public dialogue with his thorough research and thoughtful questions. And whereas he has carried out the duties of public office, honoring the public trust and representing the citizens of Gilbert with integrity and courageous leadership. So the Town Council, on behalf of all of the citizens of Gilbert, hereby express our sincere appreciation to Victor Peterson for his service to the town and as a member of the Town Council." Thanks, Victor. Town Manager Banjar, if you want to come forward? I'll save this for you.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to express the gratitude on behalf of the organization and all our employees to Victor. He reads everything that's given to him, sometimes much to our displeasure, and he has questions on almost everything he reads. But over the seven and a half years that we've worked with you, Victor, it's been a pleasure, and we've appreciated all your dedication to our community and the commitment from you and your family and the time you took away from other things to serve this community. We've enjoyed it. Kelly Fost is wondering what she's going to do with the extra time she'll have around the budget process each year that she won't be spending with you, but I thank you, Victor, on behalf of all our employees and on behalf of my family. When I first got to Gilbert, in August of 2011, Victor and his wife Joyce opened their home to us and had us over for dinner, and it was one of the best, made-from-scratch dinners I've ever had in my life, but I truly appreciated it. On behalf of the organization, we thought about getting you a card, a Hallmark card, to express our gratitude, but we thought it might be more appropriate. Victor had his bread chart for us every year at budget time, so we thought it might be more appropriate to get a loaf of bread and express our best wishes to you, Victor.
Some of my favorite outtakes ever from our digital city of the town belong to you, and so you will probably hold that record for a long time, and we're grateful. There's some more gifts, and we have one more as well. We just think everybody will want to see it. That's a Gilbert Street sign. That was to be expected, though, wasn't it? Victor has a great sense of humor, and we're really grateful for that. I know you want to say a few words, so I'll trade you. Here's the mic.
Well, there actually is a Victor Street in Gilbert, but it was named that way before I was a councilman. Not named after me, I promise, but thank you for that. I do have a couple comments. I'm going to abbreviate a little bit, because I know this is a big night for a lot of people, not just me. So there are just really three things I'm going to do very briefly. I've got a few thank-yous I want to make. I've got two personal comments, and then I just want to briefly introduce you to my family. So there's not time for thanking individually. There just isn't. And please forgive me, but I'm going to have to kind of address some groups of people here. First of all, my fellow councilmembers. Now, we've seen each other at our best. We've seen each other at our not-so-best. But the beautiful thing about it is, after all of that, we still respect each other and care about each other. And I want to thank each of you for making that possible. That was a group effort, and that's a treasure to me, and really, it's a treasure to the community, and it's an example we need more of in public venue. So thank you for that. To town staff, I know I have been a thorn in the side for many years, but I want to thank you for the grace with which you have addressed my concerns and questions. It's meant a lot to me, and your goal of absolute excellence is very clear to me, and I'm proud of the work you do. Never forget that, even with all my questions. I am proud of the work you do. And of course, to friends and citizens, and those who've supported me and those who haven't, I just want to tell you, from my heart, it has been a deep honor serving you. You know, I feel like the widow in Jesus's parable about the widow's might. You'll recall she gave very little, because that's all she had, but in God's eyes, she gave the most. I will tell you from my heart, I gave all I had. I only wish I could have given more. Now, two personal comments. They'll be brief. And I did check with the town attorney. I am no longer an elected official as of the first of the year. No one should be suing the town, okay? All right. Just to comment first on my public service and that experience. Of course, it has been punctuated with moments of joy, but I also want to point out that it has been a painful process. And I want to share something with you that has been an absolute anchor in my life. This comes from the New Testament. Jesus said, "Come unto me, all ye that labor and are heavy-laden, and I will give you rest. Take my yoke upon you and learn of me; for I am meek and lowly in heart, and ye shall find rest unto your souls." In particular, the concept of meekness, as Jesus describes, has been priceless to me. Merriam-Webster, I know not my favorite authority, but defines meek as, "enduring injury with patience," and here's the key, "without resentment." I can personally attest that any effort to be meek indeed makes our burdens lighter. Now, before I invite up my family, just one final personal comment. It's a perfect segue for them. I want to share a quote from a spiritual leader from my church. President David McKay said, "No other success can compensate for failure in the home." My priorities at home are a big reason I have to bow out of public service for a while. With that, I want to invite my family up. If they'll all come up, any of you who are here, of course, my wife and children, but also my sister. I don't know if I saw anyone else, but please come on up. I'm just going to briefly introduce them, and that's it. So I will... Others need some time. First of all, this is my beautiful wife, and I wish there was time and there were words to excuse me, describe how I feel about her. I will just say, in my eyes, she is the most desirable woman on this planet, and her support has been absolutely indispensable. Now, I'll introduce him at the end. This is my oldest son Seth. When I was first elected, he's almost 17. He's turning 17. He was much shorter than me. How the tables have turned. He just came from a basketball game, quite an athlete. Here's my son Levi. He's turning 15 this year. He's very creative and a joy in our home. Here's my son Benjamin. He's 13, very responsible and a lot of fun. And here's my daughter Lily. She's seven, and you can see she got her mama's looks. And yes, she has daddy whipped, absolutely. A little bit of a princess, and ask the boys. They'll tell you. And here's my youngest. This is Victor Luke. We call him Luke. And he has a lot of energy, and he takes a lot of energy, but he has a joy to all of us. So, and of course, my sister Emelina is here. Well, I don't want to get weepy, but in a lot of ways, she raised me, because my mother was very sick when I was young. Yes, she changed my diapers. She's not that much older than me, but she is a wonderful support and joy in my life. With that, my friends, I just want to tell you again what an honor it has been to serve you. It is a sacred honor to serve in elected positions, and I'm grateful for great elected officials who show that through the way that they behave. And I hope that continues here in Gilbert, Arizona, which, by the way, is absolutely the best city in the world. I have no doubt in my mind about that. So with that, thank you again for that personal moment.
Thank you, Victor. That was wonderful. At this time, I do get to present the election certificates to our four councilmembers. I'd first like to call up our new councilmember, Amy Yentes. Would you please come forward? We're excited Amy's here, and if you didn't recognize her name, she's actually had some pretty big life events since she got elected. Like, that wasn't a big enough thing for her to do last year. She also had to go get married, so we're excited about that. Congratulations to you and to Justin as well. It's remarkable and exciting. Councilmember Eddie Cook, would you please come forward? Councilmember Jordan Ray. And last but not least, Councilmember Bridget Peterson. These people put their lives on hold to run for office and committed tremendous time and energy and resources to be able to represent you. I have no doubt that each one of them will spend incredible amounts of time, energy, and resources to continue to do that, and I'm just so pleased that I get to continue to work with the three of you and that I get to work with you, Amy. You and I have worked together in other capacities, but this is a new one for us, and I'm just thrilled with that. I do have a certificate for each of you, and so I'll give those to you. I know you have other things to do right now, so I won't hand them out to you just yet. But would like to invite Judge Hudson forward for... Yeah, he looks really official. That's the guy that actually does the swearing-in, so we'll do it this way. I'm going to hold the mic for you, Judge, and I think that might help, right? That helps him. And then... I think we're doing it all together? Okay. You look great. I'll hold this for Judge, because he needs both his hands.
All right. If you all raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of councilmember according to the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations.
We're going to have them sign them over here.
Oh, right now?
I think they have to sign them right now. We'll get these signed. I know we have to do it right away, and Amy, if you turn around, you can see your name in lights now. Not lights, but plaque. We'd like to invite each of you to say a few things, and if it's all right, we'll start with you, Amy, and then you guys can come back up.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Daniels. I just want to really take a moment to express all the gratitude I'm feeling, which words are hard to find to express that. But first and foremost, I want to thank my family, who is a joy to see out there in the audience, my old friend and my new husband, Justin, and his daughter and my stepdaughter, Chloe, the lights of my life, my parents, who are obviously my pillar of strength and have been for my entire life. I have the joy of having all the wrigglers that my friends up here have never met before, my siblings, my brother Dustin and his wife Jessica, my nieces Olivia, I think I see there poking out, Lily and Cadence, and my sisters April and Amanda, and Amanda's husband Todd. And Justin's family's here as well, his sister Lindsay and his parents Jeff and Teresa. And I think I see Lila in the audience. Yes, Chloe's pointing them out. Thank you. And I also see a lot of friends in the audience, and I'm so grateful for all of you for your support, not just a lot of these friends I've known for a while, and a lot of them I had the privilege of becoming very good friends during this last election cycle, and so I'm very grateful for them. I'd also just like to thank everybody who supported me, whether they voted for me or not, whether I was their first choice, their fourth choice, or not a choice at all. I'm grateful that everybody in the Town of Gilbert came out and voted and exercised their civic responsibilities. And lastly, I'm very grateful for the opportunity to serve with this fine team as well as the Town of Gilbert staff, and just look forward to offering my time and energies, and I'm willing and open to learn, and I'm excited to get to work with everybody. So just humbled by this. Thank you.
Well, first of all, I got to thank our good Lord from above and give Him glory and praise. Without Him, I would not be able to do this. Secondly, I would like to invite my wife, and without her support, her love, she thinks this is kind of like a joke from God that I'm doing this again for the third time, but anyways, at the Cook House, I have lots and lots of rose bushes that I... And of course, these are not from my garden, because it's kind of cold. But roses are a really special place for me, because I do it for my wife, and I want to thank you and honor you for your love and support for me being on the council again. Thank you. I also have, before I was on council, I did not have any grandchildren, so now I have three. So Dominic and Catherine and Timothy are right here, my oldest son Joel and my daughter-in-law Jen. And my second oldest son Xavier is here. Thank you for coming. Without the rest of my other four children, or three children as well, total of five, it has been a fantastic journey. The one thing I will want to say is that serving on the council is really a privilege and an honor and I could not be more humbled to do this. And I look at it as an opportunity to really build community and to me, that's the most important part of this role is building community. From neighbors getting to know their neighbors, from neighbors getting to know the local businesses and that they support, the diverse faith community that we have and everyone wanting to help, everyone willing to help, is one of the reasons why Gilbert is like the best place, I believe, to live here in Arizona and actually in the United States. And I know that over the last eight years, I could not express the amount of joy and excitement to actually serve with what I call a one team, because that's been a very important part of my business acumen to bring to Gilbert was to create this one team. And I know with Patrick's leadership and his direct reports and the whole community here, we have created closer to that one team more than I've ever thought could ever happen and it's been just a great honor to do that. So again, thank you for all of your, what I would say, love, your support. Again, it's my privilege and honor to serve Gilbert again.
I think I'm known for being one of the shortest speakers on the council and I will keep that tonight. Thank you for each of you for coming tonight. Gilbert is the best place in the East Valley, sorry Mayor Harke, but, and in the entire region. We're only that way because of each of you, because of the residents of Gilbert, the business community, the faith groups, town staff, and every single voter and non-voter who helps make this community so great. So thank you to each of you. We've done a few things over the last few years. Appreciate Victor's support and the support of his wife to allow him to be a part of the council, but we have much more to do. I look forward to continuing to serve and I finally learned from Eddie. My wife does not want to come up, I'm confident of that, so I will just bring them to her, but without my family, I could never do this, so thank you.
Well, it's been a privilege to serve for the past four years. It's not something that I ever had on my radar to do for one time, never mind being sworn in for a second time. And I really appreciate the people that supported me through this election, whether you donated money or collected donations on my behalf or put yard signs in your yard or just shared social media posts and talked about me to your friends and family. We won this election together. It wasn't just me, it was all of us as a team and I can't even put into words how much I appreciate that. For the two dozen people that put up all of the large signs all over Gilbert, my husband Mark thanks you for that, because that was the hardest part of running for election the first time. And for the person that helped to coordinate those two dozen people, that is an amazing feat and that's something I will never forget, my friend. I have learned so much as a council member over the past four years. I thought being the only person coming in to a team that Amy's going to now experience that's been working together for a couple of years is an interesting thing to do. I quickly realized that the first thing you learn is everybody's strengths and weaknesses. We all have strengths and weaknesses and if we learn to work with our own and we work with everybody else's, then we continue to make Gilbert the amazing place that it is. I want to thank the staff because no matter what, you are the unsung heroes of this community. You answer every question for me that I have, no matter how big or how small or when I send it, even if I write, "Don't reply till Monday," sometimes I get a response right away. I appreciate all that you do. To Gilbert Police and to Gilbert Fire, we worked a lot together this past year and I can't tell you how much I appreciate everything that you do for this community and the way that you have made me feel part of your teams, no matter where we are or what we are doing. I always feel like I belong to your team in every aspect of the way. I look forward to serving for the next four years. I'm ready to get to work. I wrote it on my Facebook page yesterday, ready to hit the ground running. Here's to another great year and to another great four years in Gilbert. Thank you. Oh, my family. I mentioned my husband at the beginning. So over the past four years, like council members have said, I gained a son-in-law. The last time we were here, I thanked my husband Mark for everything that he does, whether he wants to or not. He does a lot for me. My daughter Jen and now my son-in-law Sean, they're all here tonight to support me and I couldn't do this without them and it's been said, families really give as much as the person that does this role because they're giving of you all of the time to come out and serve the community. So thank you all.
We'd like to invite the new council up to the dais to take our seats and while we're doing that and going up there, I just wanted to recognize someone who came in, Chairman Rambler. Chairman Rambler from the San Carlos Apache Indian Reservation. Thank you, Chairman, for being here. And I think that's your vice chairman, Tao, is that you? Thank you, thanks for being here as well. We appreciate you traveling to support our community.
Mayor Jen Daniels.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Council member Scott Anderson.
Here.
Council member Eddie Cook.
Here.
Council member Jordan Ray.
Here.
Council member Jared Taylor.
Here.
Council member Amy Yentes. A quorum is present.
That was like hazing for the new council member. I'm really sorry, that was unintentional. That was not on purpose. We do need to approve the resolution that was already read tonight, so is there a motion to approve Agenda Item 5?
Move to approve, Mayor.
Second.
Please vote. Okay, we'll vote by acclamation. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries with a 70 vote, thank you. We actually, at this time, will consider a nomination and the selection of the new vice mayor. Is there a nomination?
Mayor, I'd like to put into nomination, Council member Eddie Cook.
I'll second that, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, welcome, Vice Mayor Cook, and we'll switch seats just after the, after... We could all stand and give you a round of applause, that would work too. At this time, we will adjourn our special meeting. There is a reception in the lobby and we will reconvene at 7 o'clock for the business of our council meeting. I would like to request that as a new council, that we go right in front of the dais and take a couple of photos before we disperse. So thank you and thank you all of you for being here this evening.